Just working here?
Yeah, I've been living here also for two years, but 15 years in the whole. You know, I was 13 years just working in my studio.
In your studio. So do you just make your living just totally as an artist? Or did you have another profession or occupation?
It's very hard to survive as an artist. So now I'm not working outside. Hopefully, you know, I continue like that. But usually I work for... in the gardening.
I know you worked for somebody very special as a gardener. For how many years?
I worked for Marlon Brando.
For Marlon Brando, for how long?
More than 20 years.
More than 20 years, wow. Wow, was that an experience?
He was so wonderful and was open, very open person, very natural. And he appreciated my art also.
Your mother was very important in your life as coming up, learning, and going to be the human being that you are. Can you tell me a little something about her?
She was a very, very strong lady. And she has eight kids, you know. But if she had the opportunity to be some kind of artist, any artist, then she would be very, very wonderful in her field as an artist. But she didn't have that chance.
So you grew up in Brazil. No wonder you're doing all that salsa dancing and stuff. No wonder you're dancing so much. It becomes natural.
Yeah, you know, Brazil is wonderful because the energy there is amazing. The tower also would be the symbol of United States of the liberty.
Statue of Liberty.
Because that was literally was was built with immigrants from other countries.
Absolutely.
With just recycling things, materials. And now it's transcended everything.
Absolutely.
It's the best of sculpture, best of architecture, best of engineering.
On an international level.
Yeah, internationally.
Absolutely. And what Simon did also was to pull all of us in, beginning with the bits and pieces of broken dishes and glass and shelves that the kids brought in and all of the artists that have come to the place since he was there and who have contributed so much. So I'm really glad that I decided to stop by here to trade some dirt with you. So on our way to get to trade some dirt, why don't you show me around some of the things in the studio?
Ah, wonderful, very good.
Yes, yes. Oh, right behind us.
Yeah, when you get involved in the world, you know, it's so wonderful. The material is work more and you all become.
It changes as you go.
Yeah. One thing that you, you know, Rosalie, you, everything, the whole humanity is in you. You know, past and present, infinitely there, you know.
You're making me cry.
That's why I'm so grateful that my sculpture, each piece is a person, is a figure. And I'm so happy because I think I captured that in my sculpture.
It's very touching.
I'm so grateful for knowing you, Rosalie. You are so wonderful person.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you're there in the center, in the tower, Watchtower Center. Because you are very important there.
Thank you, Kinsey. You're making me cry. Came to trade dirt, I cry. Thank you so much. But it's very powerful. It's very powerful. Thank you. Thank you.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, can you have 5060 watch three? 5060, 5060, 300.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
A guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
They better enroll. We begin with an eyewitness news exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to follow it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race.
Good morning, good morning. It is Wednesday, shhh. Good morning, it is Wednesday, April 5th. Want to welcome you to City Hall, your Los Angeles City Council. Let's, I believe we have a quorum. Can you call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonne, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weesar, Corretts, Kukorian, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, so it is Friday, the 7th of April, okay. Let's go through the agenda.
Approval of the minutes?
Kukorian moves, Weesar seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rue moves and Price seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 3 to April 19th, 2017, and also to refer item 2 to the Public Works Scanning Reduction Committee. And furthermore, due to the upcoming recess, would the council like to send all items today?
Yes, all items forthwith.
All right. Items 1 and 2 are items in notice for public hearing. Mr. President, there are cards for item number 1.
Okay, let's vote on 2 then.
Mr. President, item 2 was referred back to Public Works.
So let's continue.
Items 3 through 7 are items in which public hearing has been held. Committee reports for item 3 through 6 are submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration, sir.
We'll hold 7, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes. Item number 8 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, that item is now before us. Do you have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 8.
Okay, let's continue.
Item 9 is an item scheduled for closed session. The committee report for that item has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council consideration.
Okay, I want to look to Ms. Martinez. Okay, can we, we had some audio issues. Could you repeat that, Ms. Martinez?
Matter's been taken and discussed in committee. It can be taken up in open session or if members have any questions, we can take it up in closed session.
Okay, why don't you read the item, Madam Clerk?
Item number 10 is a...
We're on 9.
It's item 9.
Item number 9 is a request to discuss with the council's legal, council pending litigation arising from the approval of the 2012 municipal separate storm sewer system permit by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The recommendation the committee took was to request the city attorney to provide ongoing litigation monitoring with outside counsel and the committee report has been submitted.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That brings us where?
That brings council to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, I'm going to take some regular general public comment now if I could have it on my screen. If I could get Tamara Case, Sean Murphy, David Rutherford, Stephen Mia, and Dana Poblet, please come forward.
Hello, good day, council. My name is Tamara Case. I'm here to request the council, get the divest movement on the agenda, to also recognize we are on Tongva land and that we have a moral and ethical responsibility to Mother Earth and for future generations to come. Please recognize that the fossil fuel industry is done and we need to address this in a timely manner. We need to seek out solutions for clean fuel and energy and transportation. And please, take this into consideration. Time is of the essence and this is also affecting indigenous rights and land and people. Time is of the essence. We really need you to move forward in pushing this on the agenda. And this is for future generations to come and a wider supply for millions of people. Please take this into consideration. Thank you and have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward, identify yourself.
Good morning, my name is Stephen Mahia. I'm with Friends of Los Angeles River. Just wanted to come up and thank the council offices and their staff for supporting us in the organization of the Los Angeles River Cleanup. So it's going to be happening over the next course of the three weekends. It's going to be a big event. We have about twice as many signups as we had last year. So just wanted to publicly thank the council offices and their staff for their support on that. It's 9,000 people last year who showed up to pick up about 70 tons of trash. We're expanding on that this year and it's an important time to be involved in infrastructure, in our natural resources, and obviously in the reinvestment in our city. So just wanted to thank everyone again. We hope to see you out there.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, council. My name is Dana Poblet. Thanks for hearing me today. I would like the city of Los Angeles to divest from Wells Fargo. Council members, I am one of your district. This last year was a priority for me and my husband. Councilman Sidio, I have neighbors and friends living in your district, including friends who traveled with me to Standing Rock to witness the firsthand atrocities that Wells Fargo invests our friends in. I can tell you both that many of our community members in Houndland Park and surrounding neighborhoods care deeply about divesting from oil pipelines, human rights violations, corporate greed, environmental racism towards indigenous people. Califa has always been a leader in climate reform and I urge council members to allow the city of Los Angeles to lead this climate revolution that we're in now. Our values at stake, our future is at stake, and I would like you to change the course of history and I'm asking you to please do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. President. I'm still not happy with the election results. Alaco City better do a good job. Some people are not happy like myself.
Next speaker, please. We're looking for Maylene Caberry.
My name is David Rutherford.
Carrie Kim, yes.
Ticket, excuse me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Is this on?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This ticket right here happens to be in violation of Jones versus Los Angeles and I want to know what you're going to do about it. This is called cruelty under the 8th Amendment by the 9th District Federal Court of the United States.
Sir, your clock is ticking, so if you...
I understand, I want to know what you're going to do about a violation of the law done by you.
Okay, unfortunately, we don't have the opportunity to have a dialogue during, that's the rules during public comment.
Well, this is the first time I've been here.
Sure, no, 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 no problem. So hold his clock.
They're making me into a...
I'm going to put 30 seconds back on your clock, okay? Because you didn't know, it's your first time here. Well, let's go ahead and put 30 seconds back on us. We'll start your minute over, how's that? So go ahead.
Well, what I want to know is why is the homeless still getting tickets when it's illegal? That's what I want to know. I think it's completely, it's a violation of my civil rights.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please. Maylene? Is Maylene still here? Yes, here you go. Thank you, ma'am. How are you today?
Hi.
Nice to see you.
I'm good. Thank you for being here and hearing us, I appreciate it. I wanted to push forward the motion for divestment to get it on the agenda. I think too long we're focused in our society on profit, like profit brings happiness, but it doesn't. Ethics, there's no mental health without ethics. And the ethical treatment of indigenous people, of all people, is of utmost importance. And when we allow our money to be invested in banks that are only about profit and not about the treatment of people and the pursuit of happiness of all people, all people, then we have a problem. So I'm really encouraging an ethical banking ordinance. I'm encouraging ethical banking, people before profit, and that Standing Rock has ignited all of us to really look at how people are being treated and what banks are standing behind. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Thanks for being here as well. And let me check in with Mr. Kukorian? Just want to check with you, I'm sorry. Are you ready for your presentation? Let's go ahead and do that now then. Okay, terrific. So we'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Paul Kukorian. Thank you very much. If we can have Councilmember Bob Blumenfield from the other side of the horseshoe meet in the middle. And when the bell rings, we'll begin the presentation. Thank you.
Well, good morning, members. This is an especially timely presentation, I think, and I'm so glad to be joined by the Chair of our Innovation Grants Technology Commerce and Trade Committee, who's wearing two hats today for this presentation. We all know that there's no issue more salient in our country right now than cybersecurity. We've just come out of a period of time when... We've just come out of a period of time when the integrity of our presidential election was even put at risk by failures in cybersecurity. So it's especially important that we recognize some of the best and brightest young people in our city who have become the nation's experts in cybersecurity. The Cyber Patriot competition was started by the Air Force Association and Northrop Grumman, and it is now swept across the country. There are 4,000 teams at the elementary, middle school, and high school level who participate, compete against one another to see who has the greatest skills at cybersecurity. And in this competition, the students actually act as IT professionals analyzing mock computer systems for security vulnerabilities and compete in that respect. So after four grueling rounds of competition, four teams from the San Fernando Valley finished among the 28 finalists out of 4,400 teams across the country, and those four teams are represented before us today. Three of them from North Hollywood High School and one from Reseda High School, and these teams are all participants in the after-school Beyond the Bell program. So these are not students who are doing this for school credit, these are students who stay after school every day, work on the weekends, compete to hone these skills, and to be among the most competitive and most talented students in the entire United States of America in achieving this result. So I'm very honored to be able to recognize the national championship team among these four, that they just got back from Washington, D.C., where they were competing against these other teams across the country. And the North Hollywood High School Team Togo was the winner out of 4,400 teams across the country, and I'm very pleased to congratulate them, and I hope you'll welcome them as well. Do you want to speak? And before I ask their coach to speak, I'd like to ask Mr. Blumenfield to say a few words.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Kukorian. Thank you for bringing this forward and for talking about the importance of cybersecurity. The folks who are standing behind us, all of these students, the winners of this competition, these are the folks who are going to be not only protecting future elections, but they're going to be protecting our autonomous vehicles from being hacked and crashed, they're going to be the ones who are protecting everything in the future. I mean, these are the crackerjack, you know, cyber protectors of today, and they're going to be the leaders for tomorrow. I'm proud of all of them, and North Hollywood folks taking the beat, but I'm especially proud, of course, of Team Alpha from the Navy Junior ROTC Program at Reseda High School in my district. You guys are right in there and did a great job. Proud of all the students here representing Los Angeles. These students have proved to be the best of the best, learning to push themselves at a young age, teaching you you can go further than you ever imagined you could go. So to the students today, I want you to know that the city of L.A. is behind you, we're proud of you, and congratulations to the Cyber Patriots from Reseda, the North Hollywood High School students, and all of you representing us on a national level.
So congratulations to Reseda High School's Team Alpha, North Hollywood's Team Truman, and Team Balto, and the national champions, Team Togo, and I would like to introduce their outstanding coach, Jay Garringer, who is going to speak about this achievement and what these students have gone through. And I should note that North Hollywood High School, in winning this, becomes the first public school in the country ever to win the national championship twice. So let's give a big hand to Coach Jay Garringer.
Well, the council member stole almost everything I was going to say, but...
Borrowed.
Borrowed, thank you. It's not whether the organizations you folks represent have been hacked in the last year or the last month, it's how many times today already since the meeting began have somebody tried to attack the city of Los Angeles and their government. And this is becoming ever more important because this is the cyber cold war we're in right now, and we've seen how our government agencies and our election systems are being attacked. And I'd like to add one thing you didn't borrow, is these folks are going to help my retirement system in the future and protect that. So it's really personal to me, but this is a tremendous program. These folks have really learned their skills, they've learned to work together, and they've learned a lot of technical things that will help us secure our country and our nation and our city. And thank you all for recognizing them today. And I'd like to present a student from Team Togo, Alec Cuda.
Hello. I am honored to address this assembly today. I'm also honored to be a member of Team Togo, which won the national finals in the open division of Cyber Patriot. This was a team effort, we've been working towards this for three years, and without every single member on the team, this would not have been possible. So I'd like to thank them. I would also like to congratulate the three other teams from Los Angeles who went to the national finals and competed there as an incredible achievement, and as you can see, Los Angeles is very good at this. We had four teams go total, more than any other city, and even more than any state in the United States. Also, I'd like to stress how important cybersecurity will be in the future. Even today, computers are becoming a larger part of our lives, and even today, people's lives depend on computers. If you're on a plane and it goes down, and it can go down because of a computer failure, that can kill a lot of people, so it's very important that we defend those. So I look forward, and the rest of us look forward, to serving the city of Los Angeles, the state of California, and the United States of America in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just say, if I could, I have an issue with some of the hackers that are over there because I'm trying to use my iPad, and it just says North Hollywood High is the best. I don't know what jokes are over there, who you think you are, but we'll find you. All right. Congratulations.
On that note, let's give it up for them.
All right. Have you guys on your way out, you want to tap into my bank account and transfer anything in there, feel free. All right, thank you again, that was awesome. These guys are great. That's fantastic. Sean Murphy, Sean, if you want to come on up? You have item one and item eight for two minutes and one minute of general public comment. So great to see you, sir, come on up. I'm sorry, just the two minutes, you already did your general public comment. Yes, thank you.
All the way around, I am supporting, like all the flags.
You got an Irish flag there? Did you want to speak on your other item, too? You had a card in, you had a card in on number eight.
I am not supporting it.
All righty, thank you. Now we have a very, very special presentation, and we'll turn it over to Councilmember Herb Wesson.
We have some very special guests, and I want to say to them, to the best of my ability, damos y caballeros bienvenidos. And, Mr. President, we have seats for our delegation from the great country of Mexico. We are visited by several governors, and if I could ask our guests to please find their name tags and take their seats, and then we shall begin. And just in case anybody else, I see Mr. Weezer is looking at me like I know how to speak Spanish now, but I have to say, eso es todo mi español. country, Mexico, I want to welcome you to Los Angeles. We have prepared a special agenda so that you and the council can just talk with one another. So I think we, Mr. Council General, we should start with some introductions?
Thank you so much.
Grab one of the microphones.
Thank you so much. A very good morning to everybody. Dear Councilmember Herb Wesson, Los Angeles City Council President, dear all council members, estimados señores gobernadores, querido subsecretario, damas y caballeros. First of all, I want to express my deepest gratitude to President Councilmember Wesson for having us here today. I have to say, since he learned that this delegation was coming to Los Angeles, he immediately asked to organize this event because he considered the visit of the utmost importance. So we are truly grateful to you, Councilmember Wesson. Thank you all as well, council members, for being with us this morning. For all of us, it's truly a privilege and a great honor to be at the City Hall, the heart of Los Angeles, home to around 1 million Mexicans and many more Mexican-American people. Last January, President Enrique Peña Nieto instructed the Ministry of Foreign Affairs to coordinate institutional efforts done both by the federal government and the Mexican states' governments in order to strengthen the dialogue with the U.S. relevant actors. That is the main reason why this governor's delegation is here, to talk to you, to work with you in a very positive way. The winds that blow today at the national level are not the most favorable, as you know, but winds in California, in Los Angeles, are always friendly, soft, and warm. That is the way it should be. Mexico and Los Angeles have been able to build a friendly, constructive, mutually beneficial relationship. Mexico-LA's bilateral trade, for example, amounts to around $15 billion annually. According to 2016 figures, you need to combine the annual bilateral trade of Mexico with countries like the United Kingdom, France, and Spain to match the amount of trade between Mexico and the city of Los Angeles itself. And if we share an extremely close relationship, in 2017, Mexico and the city of Angeles are having even a closer one as a result of the celebration of the Year of Mexico in Los Angeles, a 12-month festival in this city with lots of events that shows how strong and solid are the ties that unite us. As a matter of fact, I had the privilege to sign on February 14th with Mayor Garcetti the memorandum of understanding that marked formally the kickoff of El Ano de México in Los Angeles. And what a way to celebrate Mexico in Los Angeles with this historical visit to the City Hall. So thank you again very much, Councilmember Wesson, council members, for having us here, and thank you for your much appreciated visit, señores gobernadores, señor subsecretario. Muchas gracias.
However, you would like whatever order you choose to go into.
Muchas gracias, President. Estimadas amigas y amigos del Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Es motivo de gran satisfacción para los gobernadores de México y el jefe de gobierno de la Ciudad de México estar aquí con ustedes. Los tenemos presentes siempre. Los Angeles, California, es la tercera gran ciudad de mexicanos. La primera, la Ciudad de México. La segunda, Guadalajara. Y la tercera, Los Angeles. De este tamaño es la relación que existe entre México y California, y particularmente con Los Angeles, California. Queremos reconocer en ustedes por la presencia misma de los concejales... ...la gran pluralidad y diversidad cultural de esta gran ciudad... ...que se expresa en la composición de este consejo. Donde tenemos además queridos paisanos... ...que hoy representan a ciudadanos de esta ciudad. Que vamos a reconocer a este consejo su compromiso con los derechos humanos... ...con el respeto a los derechos de las personas... ...son un ejemplo en la Unión Americana... ...por declarar ciudad su antuario, este gran ciudad de Los Angeles, California. Es un compromiso con la historia misma de los Estados Unidos... ...porque muchos de ustedes, sus padres o abuelos... ...llegaron aquí para fundar este gran país y construir esta gran sociedad.
y construir esta gran sociedad que es plural y diversa. Por ello, nos sentimos muy halagados de estar en este consejo. Aquí se expresa lo mejor de la cultura democrática y de los principios democráticos Gracias por recibirnos. Y los tenemos en el corazón. Y siempre juntos vamos a ganar porque tenemos de nuevo esto la razón y la defensa de derechos humanos. No reconoce fronteras. Somos uno mismo. Gracias, concejales.
Please.
The head of the government of Mexico City? Muchas gracias, gracias por la oportunidad de poder dirigirnos a todos y a todas ustedes. Quiero simplemente al tiempo de saludar la presencia también del público que asiste a este consejo, comentarles que acabamos de tener una reunión muy productiva, muy importante con el gobernador de California, y que hemos presentado ahí una herramienta, un instrumento que hoy trajimos a los Estados Unidos para los migrantes, que es una aplicación. Esta aplicación está ya disponible, que se llama CDMX Contigo. Permite tener un botón de emergencia, de alerta, y una serie de herramientas que hemos puesto a disposición de los migrantes. Esta ya la tenemos aquí. Vamos a dejarles información para que ustedes la conozcan. Es gratuita. Está disponible en Android y en unos días más también en sistema iOS. También comentarles que el día de hoy hemos publicado en la Ciudad de México el decreto por el cual se declara ciudad santuario de la Ciudad de México. Y tenemos todo el compromiso para seguir trabajando con el Gobierno de la República, de nuestro país, y con los demás estados que hoy estamos aquí. Una de las tareas principales es que nuestras casas, las casas de apoyo migrantes puedan fortalecer la red y sea como una sola casa para apoyo a los migrantes. Vamos a seguir trabajando en ello conjuntamente con el Consulado de México en Los Ángeles y la Secretaria de Relaciones Exteriores en México. Es una gran oportunidad para nosotros poder dirigirnos a este consejo a todos los concejales. Les agradezco mucho su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
The Governor of the State of Sonora, Claudia Pavlovic. Thank you very much, President, for having us here. Y la verdad, para mí, es un gran momento de estar con ustedes. La oportunidad de compartir con ustedes algunas ideas. Sobre todo reconocer ustedes el gran apoyo que están brindando a los migrantes que viven en esta ciudad. Los 10 millones que se han aprobado para la defensa de nuestros conacionales migrantes y otros de otros países. Y celebramos estas medidas como algo muy innovador y de avanzada, como debe de ser. Cada vez la pluralidad y diversidad es lo que enriquece, sin duda, a nuestros países. Y como ustedes saben, más de un millón de mexicanos día a día contribuyen al desarrollo de esta ciudad con su trabajo. Estoy muy interesada, estamos muy interesados en seguir colaborando con ustedes y decir que entendemos que la migración es algo inherente a la persona humana. Mi bisabuelo de Yugoslavia llegó a tierra mexicana, Sonora, a fundar una familia que llevaba cuatro generaciones. Y esta descendiente de migrantes de Yugoslavia hoy es la gobernadora de Sonora. Quiero también compartir nuestra historia, como ustedes lo saben, de Juan Bautista de Anza, que salió de San Miguel de Horcasitas, una pequeña población de Sonora. Estuvo colonizando 242 familias, estableciendo en Arizona, en Sonora, y en California. Y hoy estamos hablando de que aquí existen ya más de 10 generaciones a partir de ese momento. Los felicito a todos por su pluralidad y sobre todo por la defensa de los derechos humanos, que es lo más importante, que nos debe unir, sobre todo, y caracterizar como lo que somos. Derechos humanos que nos debemos ser solidarios, los unos con los otros. Muchas gracias por su atención.
The Governor of the State of Guanajuato? Hola, muy buenos días. Antes que nada, agradecer a todos los concejales, señor Weezer. Gracias por recibirnos aquí. Tengo mucho aprecio a su subsecretario, igual, el embajador, consul aquí en Los Ángeles. Muchísimas gracias. Mi compañera, compañeros gobernadores, todos acá con ustedes. Pero Guanajuato, que es el destino cultural de México, donde nació México. Ahí se generó la independencia de nuestro país. Para nosotros es muy importante reconocer que Estados Unidos, y concretamente California, ha sido un destino de nuestros migrantes, muy importante en la historia de nuestro estado. Literalmente, aquí en California y Los Ángeles tenemos cerca de 400,000 guanajuatenses viviendo. Y para nosotros es fundamental entender que cuando hay un estado, hay una ciudad que reconoce, que respeta los derechos humanos. Es motivo de gratitud. Hoy venimos a decirles gracias por declarar ciudad santuario. Gracias porque les da mayor certeza, las da mayor seguridad a nuestras familias. Gracias por entender que la migración es un derecho humano. Y hoy, como lo vemos aquí, la pluralidad enriquece, fortalece, y hace más grandes a nuestras culturas, a nuestros países, a nuestras ciudades. San Miguel de Allende, en Guanajuato, tenemos ciudadanos de más de 50 países. Y para nosotros no podríamos entender a San Miguel de Allende sin la presencia de tantos ciudadanos a nivel global. Como igual, no podríamos entender a California sin tanta migración. Lo que ha hecho fuerte esta ciudad, lo que ha hecho fuerte este estado y este país, precisamente es la migración. Por ello, gracias por recibirnos. Gracias por reconocer en nuestros migrantes esa fuerza. Y lo vemos en el campo. Quién recoge las cosechas en los campos de California. Quién construye los freeways. Quién tiene los jardines bonitos en la ciudad. Quienes están también trabajando en las áreas hospitalarias, los enfermeros. Hoy los vemos en las escuelas también. Los vemos en industria. Hoy vemos la presencia de todos y cada uno de los migrantes siendo un factor de desarrollo para este gran estado, para esta gran ciudad, y para este gran país. En el cual tuve la oportunidad de trabajar hace aproximadamente 25 años en el área de Chino, Ontario, Pomona, trabajando para este gran país. Gracias por reconocer la fuerza de nuestros migrantes.
Thank you for receiving us today in this city council meeting. Today, the world set a route, and that was globalization. When I look at this city council and see the last names of many of its members, we can clearly see the diversity that the world has achieved. And we can see it today in this city council. Today, the world is closer. Once I read a book from Thomas Friedman saying that the world is flat, and the world became flat. It became flat because of technology. But especially because today we have the same values, the same principles. Principles that unite us, like human rights, like equality, like development. And today, the visit of all the governors means that we are citizens of the world. And that we have to set an agenda that maintains those principles. Throughout time, the people that have decided to work in public office have always had challenges in public policy. But that's why we're here. To understand those challenges, those demands from our constituency, and establish results. But building on the strengths of those demands. It's not through walls and understanding that the world and our countries are islands, but the other way around. It's by building bridges and uniting us on what makes us closer that we will achieve a better world and better results for our people. Today, the government of Oaxaca is here to build on those strengths. Understanding that there are more than 800,000 first, second, and third generation Oaxacans here in Los Angeles with more than 52 clubs and associations. And we are very thankful that you have been very close to these issues. And we are happy to be on the right side of history. By understanding that by opening a conversation and understanding our demands and understanding that on the center of our decision are our citizens, clearly, we will be able to build a better relation among our countries and among our citizens. We're very thankful that you can receive us. Thank you.
The Governor of Durango? Muy buenos días, distinguidas, distinguidos concejales de Los Ángeles. Muchas gracias por recibirnos esta mañana a la gobernadora y a los gobernadores de siete entidades de México. Para venir a refrendar nuestros lazos de amistad, con este estado y particularmente con esta Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Igualmente, les agradecemos la oportunidad de manera conjunta con nuestro embajador, nuestro Consul General de México, aquí en Los Ángeles. Igualmente, la presencia de su secretario, el embajador Carlos Alba. Nos permitan venir a compartir con ustedes primero, a reconocerles que esta es, se le ha declarado ciudad santuario, una ciudad que defiende los derechos humanos. Y a mí me da mucho gusto que está en este consejo de una persona de origen uruguayan. Saludo al concejal, Tedillo, quien tiene su origen en el estado de Durango. Porque sé que en este espacio, que es el espacio donde la sociedad del pueblo en general participa. Yo fui miembro también de un cabildo del Consejo el México. Fui presidente municipal de la capital del estado de Durango. De la importancia que tiene este órgano para comunicarse con la sociedad. Y les pedimos, les agradecemos su respaldo y les pedimos que nos sigan apoyando para que se sigan prestando y dando esos servicios a nuestros paisanos. Mi estado Durango tiene cerca de 350,000 personas que viven en esta región de California. Por eso, para nosotros, la relación, la comunicación con ustedes es fundamental. Y hoy venimos a reiterar esa exposición de sumar esfuerzos con nuestras autoridades consulares y con ustedes que representan al órgano de gobierno más cercano a los ciudadanos. Las casas que tenemos de México aquí en Los Ángeles permitan tener esa comunicación más fluida y permanente con ustedes para que juntos podamos trabajar en el fortalecimiento de las relaciones entre México y los Estados Unidos y particularmente con California, que es uno de los estados con los que tenemos el segundo socio comercial de México. Exporta más del 15% de sus exportaciones van a nuestro país. Entonces, la relación que tenemos entre México y esta región, este estado de California es muy intensa. Hoy es momento de que podamos cerrar filas para fortalecer a este gran estado, a esta gran nación. Pero también para que a los Estados Unidos le vaya mejor, le tiene que ir mejor a México. Si a ustedes les va bien, a México les va también.
For Mexico also.
Somos hermanos, nos une más allá de los límites territoriales, la cultura, el comercio, la lucha por el cambio climático y otras acciones, así es que
I work against climate change.
Les agradecemos mucho, señoras y señores concejales, la oportunidad de venir a refrendar el compromiso con ustedes para luchar por nuestros coracionales en la defensa de sus derechos.
To defend the rights of our countrymen. Thank you very much.
Su vecino, el gobernador de Baja California.
And the governor of California, your neighbor.
Welcome neighbor.
Thank you my neighbor.
Gracias señor vecino, los vecinos.
Muy buenos días.
Very good morning to you all.
Para su servidor y todo el equipo
For me and our entire team.
que estamos aquí presentes
That is here together today.
esta mañana
This morning here.
Esto es un momento muy especial.
This is a very special moment.
Como gobernador de Baja California
As the governor of Baja California.
Estado hermano y vecino
I have been a brother and a neighbor to you.
Aparte de un honor
It is also an honor.
A su vez también me permite expresar
I also want to state
lo que los baja californianos y los mexicanos reconocemos en todos ustedes.
From Baja California and Mexico, recognizing all of you.
El gran sentido humano, respetuoso, democrático
That is democratic and is humane.
Que esta representación popular
That this popular representation
de los habitantes de Los Ángeles
of the inhabitants of Los Angeles.
han manifestado
Have stated.
a favor de la migración
and further.
y de esta gran ciudad donde alberga, atartizan los migrantes
that has so many immigrants.
de México, sino de muchos, muchos, muchos países del mundo.
Many, many, many countries of the world.
Como se platicaba
As was mentioned.
venimos de una reunión muy interesante
From a very interesting meeting.
en nuestro consulado del México aquí en Los Ángeles.
Here in Los Angeles.
Representado por el consul Carlos García
By Council Garcia.
Y con la participación de nuestro amigo Carlos Ada
And with the participation of Carlos Alba, friend as well.
Con la presencia de mi buen amigo el gobernador Brown.
Good friend Governor Brown.
Ahí comenté
There.
que los lazos
I mentioned that the ties
y las relaciones
and the relationship.
entre países
between countries.
Pero a su vez entre Baja California y California
And also between Baja California and California.
son muy importantes.
Are very important.
Por nuestra frontera, el año pasado se dieron
over our border
setenta y cuatro millones de cruces.
Million border crossings.
Entre Baja California y California
Baja California and California.
Tenemos la frontera más transitada del mundo.
The border where there are the most border crossings in the entire world.
Contamos con un puente de cruce fronterizo
We have a border crossing bridge which is unique in the Americas.
Y me traigo que decir en el mundo
And I could say in the world.
que es el Border Crossing Express, puente internacional
Express. It's an international bridge.
Que en su inauguración en diciembre de dos mil quince a hoy
Two thousand fifteen and between then and now.
han cruzado más de un millón trescientos setenta y cinco mil personas.
One million three hundred seventy-five thousand persons have crossed.
Baja California es un estado
Baja California is a state.
que como California y también Los Ángeles
Just like California and Los Angeles.
nos hemos manifestado a través de la historia como un estado migrante.
To be a state of migrants.
Aún el cuarenta y ocho punto seis siete por ciento de los que vivimos en Baja California
of the people who live in Baja California.
nacimos en otro estado de la República Mexicana incluyendo su servidor, el gobernador
Mexico including me the governor.
nacido en el estado de Sonora
I was born in Sonora.
Que aquí mi vecina está presente también.
My neighbor she's here too, as the governor of that state.
Lo que no mencioné porque me lo recuerdo
Mentioned because I kept it.
con toda la intención de poder
To be able to
manifestarme aquí en este honorable congreso
This honorable uh meeting of the city council.
Es de que independientemente que nos separa una línea fronteriza
We have a border that separates us.
compartimos una misma región
We share the same region.
Que la sangre es muy difícil de separar.
And it's very difficult to separate that.
Que hay relaciones amistosas pero familiares
They have family and friendship.
con miles y miles y miles, simplemente millones de personas.
Thousands possible millions of people.
Tenemos abuelos viviendo en el lado de la frontera.
Living on both sides.
Tenemos padres y madres viviendo en el lado de la frontera.
Living on both sides.
Tenemos hermanos y hermanos viviendo en el otro lado de la frontera.
Living on both sides.
Tenemos primos y primas viviendo en el otro lado de la frontera.
Living on both sides of the border.
Tenemos compadres y amigos viviendo en el otro lado de la frontera.
Close friends on both sides of the border.
No nada más las relaciones comerciales, a su vez, que son importantes y fuerzas, no los lazos amistosos
But also we have ties of friendship.
la consanguinidad que nos une
And we have kinship relationships.
Comunistas de este mundo con los mismos derechos
And we are all people of the world that have the same rights.
Y estoy seguro que al entenderlo nos ayuda para nosotros
I'm sure the understanding that will help all of us
a fortalecernos
to strengthen ourselves.
en cuerpo y en alma.
In body and soul.
Porque un gobernante, un buen gobernante, no nada más
Governor.
gobierna bien
Doesn't just govern.
experiencia, la honestidad y un
With violence and honesty and a good team.
Un buen gobernante gobierna bien siempre, que le metan el corazón también, que con el corazón también se gobierna.
Into the work because you also govern with your heart.
Y nosotros aquí venimos a entregarles nuestro corazón a nuestros amigos y nuestros hermanos americanos
To the Americans here.
y de Los Ángeles.
And the people of Los Angeles.
Los muros
Walls.
son más que complicados.
Are very complicated.
Son ofensivos.
They are offensive.
Cuando se construye un muro
When you build a wall
se separan a las personas.
You separate people.
Construyendo un muro
When you build the wall
se separan a los mexicanos
You separate Mexicans.
pero también se separa, se separa a los norteamericanos.
And also separate the people of the United States.
En un país en un país
In a country.
That the land of the free
Que es el país de los hombres.
I don't think that makes a lot of sense for me. I don't know if it makes a lot of sense for you.
Si tiene mucho sentido para mí o mucho sentido para ustedes.
Les expreso y les expliqué
I am expressing
una invitación al estado de Baja California
An invitation to come to Baja California.
En la presencia también de los cinco presidentes municipales y sus cabildos.
Of the five mayors and the council people.
Espero que esto sea pronto
I hope that that will happen soon.
y lo recibiremos con el mismo respeto y que ustedes nos han recibido aquí.
Welcome that we have received here.
Muchas gracias por su atención.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias, mis hermanos de Los Ángeles.
Thank you very much, my brothers and sisters of Los Angeles.
Me permito, si me presenta el consejo, eh no necesita presentación, subsecretario. El embajador Carlos Ada, subsecretario para América del Norte de la Secretaría de Relaciones Exteriores.
Carlos Manuel Ada.
Todo el mundo lo conoce, todo el mundo lo aprecia en esta ciudad.
And this city.
Y para mí es un orgullo saludar al subsecretario y consul general número cincuenta y cinco
under secretary.
en la historia de la presencia del consul general de México en Los Ángeles.
In Mexico, Mexico here in Los Angeles.
A man that needs no introduction before us welcome home to you. Just give our old friend a round of applause for all of the service to your country and to ours.
Thanks so much. I'm delighted to be here. I feel at home. Since I kind of climbed by the steps. Said, well, I'm coming with friends. And when I see Mr. Wissad, Mr. Carr, Mr. Krikorian, Nuri Martinez, Mitchell Farrelly, Mr. Price, Mr. Wright, Bloomingfield, Mr. Bonning, Mr. Cedillo just went out, England there, Mr. Harry Dawson. All of them are friends. All of you participate in so many battles in order to make the life of our migrants better. And it is unique. So that's why I feel so stimulated and motivated to be back here. Y ya escucharon los gobernadores, los gobernadores de México, todos tienen conexión
From all of them, there's a link.
con Estados Unidos y en particular con Los Ángeles.
To New York State and specifically to Los Angeles.
Que si vinieran otros días gobernadores
And if we had another ten governors here
las experiencias serían similares. Pero si hay un país en donde hay ciudadanos estadounidenses en el mundo ese país se llama México, en donde existen por lo menos casi dos millones de ciudadanos americanos. Y en este proceso de deportación que se ha dado años anteriores
deportations that have taken place in previous years.
existen ahora entre quinientos mil y seiscientos mil niños jóvenes que fueron regresados a México, algunos por voluntad propia
Some of them voluntarily.
y otros forzados por las circunstancias.
Other were forced
Pero que hace que la integración de los dos países, de los estados y de nuestras ciudades sea cada vez más profundo.
And
Cuando veo la red de banderas que está enfrente de nosotros
When I see the flag
Estados Unidos, California, Los Ángeles y México, eso es lo que sucede en la práctica, en la realidad. Son sociedades que están interconectadas. Y eso es posible gracias
This is possible thanks
a funcionarios
to officials.
que como ustedes tienen una visión clara
yourselves have a clear vision.
No solo de lo que ha sido el pasado y el presente, sino lo que representa el futuro para todos.
But what this represents for the future
Traigo un saludo especial del señor presidente de México
Special greetings from the president of Mexico.
Señor Enrique Peña Nieto, Peña Nieto que estuvo aquí hace tres años siendo recibido con el entusiasmo que caracteriza a los californianos
greeted with
y también de mi jefe director de Secretaría de Relaciones Exteriores
and also the
por lo que han hecho ustedes como miembros de este cabildo para dar una mejor calidad de vida a nuestra gente.
To
Espero que esto se continúe reflejando
This continues to
en las acciones cotidianas, pero sobre todo
daily actions.
que se sigan proyectando a otros lugares dentro de este país y el resto del mundo
in this country and throughout the world.
de cómo trabajan las sociedades de manera muy integral. Muchísimas gracias, señor presidente. Muchas gracias a todos.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thanks to all of you.
President Wilson, tiene usted nuevamente la presidencia del consejo.
Want to guess?
Tiene la palabra.
Mr. Wilson, you have
Gracias.
Oh, I'll just say, thank you, but what I'd like to do now I want to call on Mr. Cedillo to say a few words on behalf of the council. Mr. Cedillo.
Mr. President, let me begin and I also want to speak, if I may, with respect to our colleagues. Mr. Wissad, Ms. Martinez. You see us here today as your representatives, but this is an expression of the democracy of our city, of our state, and of our nation. Ms. Martinez and I are representatives of our community, but it is a diverse community, but it is also a product of our constitution. Our seats were designed to make sure that Mexican-Americans, their voice, their community, and their families were represented. And so our seats were designed as products of court demands in which the will of our communities was manifested and expressed in the court and the courts found that it was necessary for us to have if we were to have a democratic city, that we would have to define areas in which Mexican-Americans would have an opportunity to be elected. Mr. President, I don't think you fully appreciate the historic nature of this moment. We are at a time of incredible tumult and conflict of our values as Americans. In Washington, as you know, for the last year, we have heard incredible anti-immigrant, anti-Mexican, and anti-Latino rhetoric. There is a hysteria that is taking place and a specter in our communities of deportation, of disruption, and frankly, of an embarrassment in terms of our relationship. This obviously has effect on us as city to city, state to state, and nation to nation. But we are here as a city to say that we continue to embrace our duality, continue to embrace our common values, and more so continue to embrace our shared vision. A vision where all people are treated with dignity and respect, where the human rights of all persons, as laid out in the Charter, the UN, are respected. Let me say to you as an anecdote, this week was a good week in one sense, because there was a study out of our great university, Stanford, that indicated that the driver's license for immigrants was valuable in reducing hit-and-runs and making our highways and our streets safer and our communities safer. Thank you. That is important for us as policymakers, because we have to understand that we try to construct policy, Mr. President, in the context of politics. We're trying to construct the best policy, how to make a city safe, secure, vibrant, economically robust, global, and we do that in the context of the politics that are taking place in Washington. We are proud to do all the things that we do to welcome people throughout the world, but we remain challenged by this conflict. We have a new committee on immigration. We will shortly announce our new consultant, a man whose reputation is well-known, well-respected, and we, like the states, like the governor, like the state legislature, are prepared to continue to protect the rights of all our residents in our city and our state. Let me finish by saying, Mr. President, this is a really historic moment for us, and I thank you for your leadership. You, by this event, acknowledge and recognize the importance of this moment. This conflict will pass. What will not pass is the unity of our two cities and of our two states and of our nations. Because that unity is founded in our history and our present, but more so importantly, in our future. We are a community that is destined, we cannot be denied. We will continue to grow, prosper, cross back and forth. That is our destiny, and we will do so in a manner which respects the human rights of all. Every person in our city will be treated with the dignity and respect that God intended, and for that, we thank you for your presence, we thank you for your consideration, and we thank you for your commitment to those shared values and that shared vision. Muchísimas gracias. En placeta.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cedillo, Mr. Wissad.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Cedillo. You One last anecdote. Nineteen twenty-one December, my family came north from Durango, and the tumult of the Mexican Revolution had extended. At the front end, nineteen-ten, my grandmother was born here in downtown Los Angeles, but in nineteen-twenty-one, my family came north of the border. My grandfather was a child. My father was, as he, my grandfather became a man. My father was born, my grandfather passed away. This is my father. He quickly embraced the values of this great country, served his duty, paratrooper, eighty-second Airborne, all the way, but never forgot his heritage and his history. Thank you. Gracias.
Mr. Wissad.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. President, for bringing us to this historic moment as my colleagues
us to this historic moment, as my colleague Sedillo mentioned. We have never had so many governors from Mexico or from any country in the world be here in these chambers at one moment to discuss policy, to discuss our similarities, to discuss how we move forward together. And it's so relevant today, given everything that's happening nationally, and how this president used a political platform to vilify Mexicans as a way to start his campaign, and here we are in the same fight together against this vilification. So thank you for visiting us, we appreciate that.
Les quiero dar la gran bienvenida aquí a este cabildo, a la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Sabemos que no les tenemos que dar la bienvenida porque ya nos conocen muy bien, y así muy interesante que tenemos, muchos de ustedes tienen raíces aquí con sus familiares, han visitado, han vivido aquí en Los Ángeles, y eso realmente es un señal de lo que representa Los Ángeles. Uno de ustedes, ya lo he dicho, que tenemos mucha diversidad en esta ciudad. Hoy decimos que tenemos la ciudad más diversa de todo el mundo, y es una fuerza, es algo que nos da la habilidad de hablar con cualquier país en el mundo, y principalmente con México. También alguien dijo que aquí en Los Ángeles viven más mexicanos, segundo solamente o tercera Guadalajara, y también a la Ciudad de México, y es algo muy importante. Lo que pasa aquí en Los Ángeles afecta a México, lo que pasa en México afecta a Los Ángeles, y por eso esta comunicación es muy, muy importante. Me da mucho orgullo a mí ser nacido en México, nací en el gran estado lindo de Zacatecas. Me da también un gran orgullo decir que tenemos dos de los tres concejales con raíces mexicanas, tenemos raíces zacatecanas, también Nuri Martinez, de padres zacatecanos. Y para nosotros es muy importante seguir este diálogo que tenemos, es muy importante seguir hablando, platicando del futuro que tenemos. Aquí también tenemos un concilio, que cuando el presidente dijo que iba a atacar a nuestros queridos emigrantes aquí, todos nos paramos fuerte a luchar, a esta lucha que tenemos, y me da mucho gusto. No solamente eran los mexicanos, no solamente eran las minorías de esta ciudad, pero todos nos paramos muy fuerte a luchar lo que estamos enfrentando en este día. Y en ese tema, en ese tema queremos decir, hay que seguir trabajando juntos, hay que seguir este diálogo, y aquí tenemos dos personas que ya tenemos en eso, el gran consejo general Carlos García de Alba, que es un gran amigo, siempre trabajando con nosotros, siempre aquí en estos días, pero estamos hablando cada día cómo vamos a mejorar las vidas de los mexicanos en México y aquí también en Los Ángeles. Nuestro gran amigo acá, Under-Secretary Carlos Sada, que también es otro gran amigo, gracias por todo lo que ha hecho por nosotros aquí en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, y se lo llevaron de nosotros a hacer otras cosas más grandes en este país, pero nos da mucha alegría que sigue regresando a hablar con nosotros. Finalmente hay que decir que de este modo mucha gente se equivoca, they get confused, como se dice en inglés, que los inmigrantes es algo riquinho. Es, Los Ángeles se fundó por personas de Sonora, se fundó de gente mexicana, siempre hemos tenido gente pasando la frontera todo el tiempo. Aunque yo nací en Zacatecas, mi abuelo ayudó a construir este edificio que estamos aquí, y de eso, eso es un ejemplo de cómo seguimos yendo para atrás a México, llegando y regresando. Esto es no algo nuevo, y recordar a la gente de este país que siempre ha querido los mexicanos aquí trabajando a construir economía, a construir la cultura, y muy importante tener este diálogo con ustedes. Muchísimas gracias. Bienvenidos. Esperamos verlos muy pronto.
Let, let me say, on behalf, behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, that you honor us with your presence, and we are just so excited to have you here. And we tried to figure out what could we do to make your trip somewhat special. So I'm going to ask Ms. Martinez to make sure the guys do the right thing. What we have decided to do is to make each and every one of you an honorary citizen of the city of Los Angeles. So if you guys would still, if you would present them, present them with the certificates. Okay, I, I think members have it, Mr. Weeza, you, you have some there. And Mr. Sedillo?
De parte de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, me da mucho orgullo presentarle este certificado y hacerle reconocimiento al gobernador del estado de Morelos, puede pasar, el señor Graco Ramírez. Muchas gracias por su presencia.
Y me da mucho orgullo presentarle este reconocimiento a una mujer, la gobernadora del estado de Sonora, Claudia Putravish.
Muchas gracias, concejal Sedillo?
Quiero presentar a Carlos García de Alba. Consul, nuevo consul.
Muchas gracias, con honor. Muchas gracias, gracias. Gracias. Gracias.
Sí. Y a Carl, por favor, Miguel Ángel Mansala. Qué honor.
Muchas gracias.
No, 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 no.
Por acá, por favor.
Here, please.
Thank you.
Yo creo que me diste que estabas en el festival de la Olimpiada de Venecia. ¿Y tú vas a venir a la fiesta?
Mr. Weeza, you have the remaining?
Yes, sir.
So, and, and if I could ask our guests, we're going to take a photograph with the council and you at the center table when Mr. Weeza has completed his presentation. Mr. Weeza?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to ask Miguel Márquez from La Tierra de José Alfred Jiménez, Guanajuato. Pase, por favor, para acá.
Give him a round of applause.
El de José Alfred, y de Miguel Ángel.
De nuestro vecino, el gobernador de Baja California, Francisco Arturo Vega de la Madrid.
Our neighbor, give him a round of applause.
Gobernador de la Madrid.
I will come down.
When I close the border, they ask for my visa, I'm going to show this, okay?
And I will work my signatures on top.
All right, NYPD stops you while driving in the city of Los Angeles, you can pull that out too.
Y nuestro querido gobernador, el vecino de Zacatecas, el gobernador de Durango, José Rosas Ayspuro.
Okay, let's give everybody a round of applause, Mr. Weeza. I'm going to need you to help. Shh, we're going to take one more photo. Mr. Weeza, we want everybody facing where I am, make sure you save your president a space, because I'm going to come get in the photo. We will recess council for two minutes.
Sir, so we're facing you?
Yes.
Come back here, okay.
All right, all right, we're going to, if we're going to ask all the, our special guests to please start making their, their way out of council chambers, we're going to get back to the business at hand and turn ourselves back over to the agenda. If we can, please. We do have a special one on the agenda, so for those wishing to speak on special one, please enter your, your name as a, as a speaker on that item now. All right, if, if everybody can start making their way out. We do still have an agenda to go through. Shh, if we can, please start making your way out of council chambers. All right, let's go ahead and turn our attention back over to the agenda if we can. Sergeants, if we could please ask you to go ahead and clear the, the speaker cards and items off the center table as well, so we can go back to the regular meeting. All right, let's go ahead and recess the regular meeting and open the special meeting. It's a rule 23, okay, I apologize, we'll go ahead and take that item now.
Mr. President, the city attorney will speak on the findings and council shall take a vote on that first, sir.
Great, thank you very much.
So, thank you, Mr. President. Since the, since the posting of today's agenda, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners approved a resolution authorizing an emergency water supply agreement with the Metro... approved a resolution authorizing an emergency water supply agreement with the Metropolitan Water District to allow the water district to take excessive runoff from L.A. Aqueduct and manage floodwater. Immediate action is needed to waive the council's review of the DWP action to expedite execution of the agreement with the water district to provide these critical time-sensitive services, particularly in light of the council recess. So, two votes will be required. First, we need to vote on the findings per Government Code Section 54954.2. If the findings are met, we'll then take public comment and we can then vote on the substance of the item.
Sounds great, thank you very much, we'll go ahead and open the roll for findings first, so open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now that item is before us, we'll ask Ms. Martinez to open it up.
Mr. President, colleagues, this item before us today is a motion to assert jurisdiction over a board of Department of Water and Power to take action to execute a contract with Metropolitan Water District to deal with our water emergency that we acted on previously. By doing this, we are consenting the agreement with DWP, I'm sorry, MWD to divest some of the water to help manage the coming flows from the eastern Sierras. And due to our recess next week, the way would double and delay DWP's action, creating the need for this action today, so I ask you to please support this. There you vote yes on rule 23.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, so we do have a number of speaker cards that we'll go ahead and open up for Eric Previn, followed by Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman. You can all three come up now, it's one minute, stay on the item or you'll forfeit your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, oh, sorry, thank you, it's Eric Previn from Studio City. And this is an interesting area, and we understand that the swelling up in Inyo and Mono has created, we have $900 million of DWP infrastructure up there, so this is an opportunity to get some emergency funding and clearance moving to get that going, and payments will be forthcoming from the federal government if we had so needed. Now, the question that has come up is payments. And whenever I hear DWP, which is, this is the Water and Power Group, I think of the payment processing, because there was that horrible lawsuit, and now we replaced Price Waterhouse with Wells Fargo. So, when you have a house full of divest L.A. people, you need to be very cautious about those contracts. I know Mr. O'Farrell is seeing about doing the absolute minimum and looking at divesting certain kinds of investments, but this is really big business. When you have payment processing run by Wells Fargo Bank, that is a historically shamed bank at the moment, and the city continues to move forward in that way, so I would ask you to look very closely. We need this money, but let's make sure Wells Fargo doesn't get it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns a rescue operation by the MWD on the city's piping system. The system, I understand you have a report up there, correct me if I'm wrong, needs about $870 million worth of repairs. This will go for a few million dollars worth of repairs. We have the worst water system, we have pipes breaking all over. Generally, you don't want pipes breaking in white neighborhoods, and they spend most of their money in white neighborhoods west of La Brea. But occasionally, they break, and this will allow the MWD, where the mayor's gay lover, Glenn Dakes, it's HollywoodHighlands.org. The whole system is falling apart.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Herman. Stay on the subject, please.
So, when it comes to the payment processing for Wells Fargo, payment personnel, like people who make a process for payments, it would be kind in the interest of the public if all their money was used for the infrastructure to build up the broken-down system. After all, we fired all those DWP people who overcharged us, remember? Do you remember? And after all, if we have still supported Wells Fargo, then Wells Fargo has failed in that same process of a processing for payment. So, listen, Rookie, stop messing with me, Rookie!
The speaker is off-topic.
Yeah, as usual, thank you very much. You got 10 seconds, sure, okay, so that concludes the general public comment, did you wanna yell out, Mr. Herman, one more time? Did you have something else to say? Yeah, I didn't think so, okay, thank you. Gave you a chance, though, so we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Great, that passes, thank you very much, let's go ahead and go into item one. And item one. So, we're gonna call back up our favorite three people, Eric Previn, John Walsh, Mr. Herman, come on up on item one and eight, stick to the items, or again, you'll forfeit your time, thank you very much. And then you'll have and then one minute for general public comment, so one minute on each, and then general public comment for one minute following your two minutes. Mr. Walsh, please let us know where you're blogging.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number one, this is a $25 million worth of, exceeding $25 million, for the acquisition and rehab of multifamily housing rental facilities. I'm telling you, ask anyone in the housing industry, this is about a $10 or $12 million contract. The rest of the money goes into the developers' pockets. You know it, I know it, and you will say nothing about it, and of course, the L.A. Times won't do it, because the reporter who runs at the L.A. Times is in love with the mayor. Next one is number number eight, okay. These are parking restrictions in Herb Wesson's neighborhood. If you're black, and you don't live near Herb Wesson, if you're Hispanic or you're Asian, you will never get what this does is prevent huge trucks from parking and staying in your neighborhood. But you're allowed to be black, cuz his ass is white, Herb Wesson's ass is white.
Stay on the subject, you just went out of your time, go ahead, one minute in the general public comment. Your one minute's starting.
Vehicles, and I challenge you to show me any other place, any other place where you are allowing, where you are banning oversized vehicles. The only reason these vehicles are being banned here, and during hours, 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., that's when they sleep in the cars. They get off the freeway, they fall asleep, they get, the prosthetics show up, and the truckers get blowjobs. But not in Herb Wesson's neighborhood, that's why they're trying to make me, keep me quiet. Now, I'm gonna go on to my one minute of general public comment.
That's already started, you've got 15 seconds left of your general public comment.
What do you mean it's started, asshole, you scumbag, lying piece of fucking shit? And that goes for your mother.
Thank you very much, you're so sweet, so kind, thank you. Appreciate those kind words. All right, Mr. Herman.
Politically correct, thank you, John. But when we talk about CD15 and CD1, I'm gonna put the little cute puppet down, because we're talking about $25 million that some dirtbag, scumbag developer has no interest in the public's process at the Magnolia City Lights. Rookie, Magnolia City Lights. Because if there was an interest in the Magnolia Lights facility for $25 million, why would scumbags keep asking local government to fund it? When we have an issue with homelessness and a population of people who can't afford their rents? Now, I'm going to item number seven, Rookie.
Eight.
Eight, thank you, Rookie. So, as you heard the dibbler-dwore say in CD10, parking restrictions for oversized vehicles. How many times, Mr. B?
Too many times!
See, even puppets can respond to that. You know, when you're sleeping in your vehicle, so, you need to move your vehicle, you've been parked too long? Hello? And the person in there is homeless, he's not upset, he just simply exercises his First Amendment under 42 U.S.C. and tells them to back off. Back off, sir! I'm just trying to provide myself a living until I get HHH and JJJ to support me on the establishment for parking, sir? Not to be restricted to park in a non-constitutional manner? But no, we have morons that say it's unconstitutional to sleep and park in your car because you're homeless, like we talked about at the LAPD Commission on Homelessness. And I support it, because this is how I think about it under the First Amendment, Fifth Amendment, and my Fourteenth Amendment. Stop violating constitutional law in the state of California, and fuck you! Now, what's my general public comment? So, Cohen versus California, and we got Brandenburg vs. Ohio, bro? Brandenburg vs. Ohio, bro? This is the donkey show I talk about. Because us Negroes live in the street because we're discriminated, because there's no housing. We're discriminated because people like you that sit behind a closed door and call out the shots for developers to pad their wallets, thank you, Mr. Walsh? Yeah, so you continue, and then you got that dumb fucking wetback governor here, talking about what? Sanctuary cities? This is fucking America, I'm an American! Get the homeless people off the goddamn fucking street and put to measure JJ, HHH? Bitch, bitch, bitch! Because don't bring some fucking dumb white nigger from another country saying that we need to make this a sanctuary city, when we Americans are suffering harm and brutality because of you fucking Holocaust motherfuckers! Fuck the Jews!
Excuse me. It is First Amendment rights, but, Mr. Herman, I'll share mine as well, you're a disgrace. So, Mr. Previn, and if anybody agrees with me, feel free to let him know on his way out as well. Mr. Previn, you get to follow that.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn from Studio City. The, this item is our treasured partners from Levi Affiliated Holdings LLC. They're putting together some affordable housing, it's actually bonds for the provision of these kinds of housing and upgrades and such. Shaw Leavy is the founder, and he used to work at Price Waterhouse, he's got a company in Santa Monica. They've got $500 million roughly invested across the Western United States.
Excuse me, Mr. Previn, hold your time, Herman, you're out of here. You keep walking across the aisles, it's disrupting this meeting, you know the rules, you can't keep getting up. I'm holding your time, Mr. Previn. So, if you're gonna keep walking up back and forth, you're out, so you've been warned, you were warned at the beginning, you know the rules, you're here every single meeting disrupting this meeting, so we'll see you later after the recess, goodbye. Now you're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Previn, if you're gonna continue to talk, I told you to hold your time, then you're gonna be asked to leave as well, so goodbye, Mr. Herman. All right, everybody say goodbye to Mr. Herman. All right, Mr. Herman. I held your time, Mr. Previn, thank you, I didn't want you to disrupt it.
You interrupted my speaking, it's okay, it's not okay. The, this company that I was describing, and was in the middle of talking about, is also an investor in Little Tokyo. It's just not appropriate to interrupt speakers during their time, sir. And, you know, he was not, he was not interrupting the meeting, he was distracting you, because you're easily distracted. And I'm not speaking on behalf of that man, but your conduct is not appropriate in this hall. Item number, I guess it was, well, first of all, item number seven, if you say that there was a committee hearing on it with all the governors, I'd like to know if that really happened. Because you put it in a section saying we can't speak on it, is that true? Mr. Fable? I signed up on it, yes or no? You're burning my time but not responding, so.
You can't ask questions, it's just a comment, you're on the general public comment, if you have a specific question, you could put it in writing to the city attorney's office, certainly, like anybody else, thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. Item number eight is yet another restriction on large vehicles, which is aimed at homeless people in Los Angeles. It's not a good solution, because there's no there there, it keeps pushing people out of nicer and other neighborhoods, and we're not providing a credible solution for that population, so I really worry about that, and I worry about all these items that appear on a part of the agenda where you won't allow speakers to address them in front of this hallowed body, it's silly, but it's also wrong, and a violation of the Brown Act, that's why I'm challenging that in the appropriate forum. I'll take my general public comment now if you're ready. My name is Eric Previn, and I am from Studio City, I am a diligent tender of these meetings from time to time, and I bring comments that are relevant to members of Los Angeles. You and your team, Mr. Wesson and Council President Martinez, have put together a program to make it that if rules are broken in this hall, and the rules are famously confusing and politicized in this hall, it can be treated as a trespass. You've asked the city attorney, who you asked me to write a note to, and I will, I'll follow up on that, to look into providing an ordinance so that people who redress their local government or speak out, like the divest L.A. people, like many others who come down to this hall, were frequently removed, but you're looking to make it not just a removal, but a criminal offense with six months in jail and up to a $1,000 fine. This is not appropriate in a time when journalism, like I'm a writer, and many of these people are also communicators and bloggers, to be limiting people's opportunity to speak out about what our elected officials and those who work for them are doing is a real misunderstanding of what we like here in America, in Mexico and other countries where open society.
Thank you very much, Mr. Previn, your time is up. Thank you. You may agree with him, but don't encourage him, all right. Yes, Mr. Weezer?
For the next speaker, I'd like to make a welcome, some students who are here with us today, that's okay with you?
Yes, great, thank you very much, hopefully they were able to witness our First Amendment rights.
Yes, they did. Well, to the students back there, and thank you, Mr. Marquise Harrison, for talking to our students. I wanted to officially welcome them, these are students from Roosevelt High School in Bull Heights. They are here with the, let's give them a big round of applause.
All right. They are here with the Pratt, Pat Brown Institute Leadership Program. Under the program, the students have learned how to pitch certain public policy issues, such as homelessness, develop policy projects as a team, and serve the community by interning in public and community organizations. We thank them for their hard work, and they're here as well, accompanied by Rafael Sonenschein, the executive director of the Pat Brown Institute, welcome as well, and thank you for your work in writing about the history and politics of this great city that we have. It's great for these students to be able to have someone like you with them, thank you so much. Welcome, students, and go home, folks!
All right, great introduction, thank you. And thank you, Professor, for being here as well, appreciate it. All right, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the remaining items, those are one, seven, and eight. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved, thank you very much. Do we have any general public comment cards left, I believe we do, we'll go ahead and go into those now. All right, you can feel free to start lining up and speaking, you've got one minute each. David Rutherford, Joe Jimenez, Carrie Kopson, Carrie Kim, Lydia Ponce. Are any of these folks still here? Make your way, please, if you're here, if I've called your name in any particular order, and state your name before you speak, so we know who you are, thank you very much.
Thank you, council, my name is Carrie Kim, I live in District 13, and I'm urging the city council to put the motion to divest from Wells Fargo on the agenda as soon as possible. I want to thank the council for your commitment in 2016 to transition Los Angeles to 100% renewable energy. I'm asking that you demonstrate that commitment now by divesting from Wells Fargo as a symbolic gesture of our move to divest from fossil fuels, to support indigenous sovereignty, human rights, and to adopt a village-minded consciousness. In the past year, the oil industry has taken 36.1, has contributed $36.1 million to lobby California lawmakers. Governor Brown himself has taken roughly $10 million from this industry to, while also claiming to support sustainability and the environment in California. Over the past six years, the oil industry has lobbied to the tune of $122 million to squash and neuter environmental risks.
Thank you very much, next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Carrie Kopson, and I wanted again to show you my granddaughter Luna's picture. And I want you, and I hope that you will divest for her future, your children's future, and your grandchildren. When you don't think, you don't think this is a serious problem, start researching, finding out how many oil spills that we're having in this country, how many cities are reporting lead in their water. We have got to start doing something to save this precious water. How many of us didn't have to pay for water 20 years ago? Water was for free, now we're having to pay for it. So, I'm just wanting you to know So, I'm just wanting you to know that I am here in representing my granddaughter Luna and her future, and the future of all children. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Lydia Ponce, I'll be soon changing her last name. The council here, I want to thank you for putting that motion forth and putting it to Budget Committee, they failed to agendize it so far, from what I know, they have 72 hours to this Monday, or Tuesday, or even for next Friday. What can we do together to encourage them to agendize this item, as you're making plans for next week, or answering emails, and I'm standing here before you're talking, because I don't actually even offer an email to Mr. Bonin for parking, because I, we've been waiting four years to meet with him, four women of color for four years, and now that he has a secondary term, I'm now holding my breath. So, I'm looking to the left, and I'm looking to the right, and asking you, how can we work together to get this agendized, and get this motion forward and approved, get the process going? You have a process before you, at the end of this month, we need to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. Please, reach out to Divest L.A.
Thank you very much, next speakers, please. Okay, so we can go ahead and take David off, he must be gone, Joe, I called your name as well, so the next speaker then is Mario, or Maro, I'm sorry? Followed by Mariko, Jason, Rob, Keith, Marjorie, David, Jorgensen, Phoenix, Trinity, Veronica, Michelle, followed by Madeline, Adrienne, or Adreen, Adrienne, apologize, Irene, okay? Graham, Shannon, Rivers, Jeff, Stansler, Courage, all right, there you go, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mauro Kukusian. The people of L.A. no longer find Wells Fargo a suitable place for the city's money. Wells Fargo created 2 million fake accounts. Wells Fargo refunded $130,000 in overdraft fees to those very unauthorized accounts they opened. As a result, Wells Fargo fired 5,300 employees, which Bloomberg reported as, quote, cosmetic. They fired zero number of executives and filed no criminal charges. Their CEO, John Stumpf, was able to retire with $133 million in his account. If it hasn't been made clear by now, these fraudulent practices pose a class issue, an intersectional economic, social, and environmental justice issue. There's no more time to waste. I respectfully ask the council to schedule the divestment motion for next week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before our next speaker, I just want to let you know, we're actually close to losing a quorum. The council rules, just so you know, are a 10 minutes for general public comment, we're already there, so I'm going to ask all of you what you would like to do, you can either do a rapid fire, or I just cut off general public comment, we file your cards, but if you all want to introduce your name and say why you're here, we could do that as well, it's up to you, so I'll give you a minute to speak amongst yourself.
Why can't, we've waited patiently for a long time.
So, as I explained, we're close to losing a quorum, and so unless you want to pick one or two speakers to speak on all your behalf, you could do that as well, yes? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Shannon Rivers, I'm a former delegate and participant at the United Nations Permanent Forum on Indigenous Issues. I'm here to talk about divest from Wells Fargo, and I'm asking you to give me a few more minutes, or a few more seconds of your time. We saw that the Mexican representatives were here, I want to acknowledge that we are on Tongwa Territory, and that there are over 170,000 Native Americans here in the Los Angeles area, there are over a million Zoptec and Mistec indigenous peoples, and they did not come here on their own free will. For decades, and probably centuries, indigenous peoples have been relocated, forced to move out of their territories, because of practices like Wells Fargo, because of the struggle, the environmental, social, and economic impacts that happen not only on the reservations, not along the borders, but because of policies that still continue to violate the rights of indigenous peoples. You, as a city council, have the potential to divest this money, to divest in projects that will help these citizens of the Los Angeles County, it'll also show that we truly want to live in a better society. Divest this money, take this money out, stop Wells Fargo's from violating, continually violating human rights of not only indigenous peoples, but the citizens of this city and of this state, thank you.
No, thank you very much, and thanks for speaking on all their behalf as well, and I just want you all to know that, that once we lose a quorum, we wouldn't have even gotten that in, and in fact, we were already at the 10 minutes, so I'm glad you picked somebody to speak so eloquently on all your behalf, so, but your names are officially part of the record, is filing out, filling out one for public comment, so thanks again for being here, truly appreciate it, and thanks for all your patience. Okay, so with that, the other members have already left, those, Zuma Dogg and Wayne, neither one of them were here, so we'll file their cards as well, and I believe that concludes the agenda, do we have council motions for filing and referral?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right, we'll go ahead and file and refer those. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? We do have an adjourning motion from Mr. Weezer, so if we can please ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for an adjourning motion, everybody please rise. Thank you, Sean. Everybody please rise, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Philip Boz, a beloved community leader and owner and funeral director of Garrett Cunningham Boz Mortuary in Bull Heights and Huntington Park. A proud Angelino, Philip was born in Los Angeles in 1947. His parents, Felipe and Jenny, were also native Angelinos, and the Boz family served the Los Angeles funeral home business for a very, very long time, over three generations. Philip was raised in Bull Heights and graduated from Sulejan High School in 1965, he remained a big part of the Sulejan family, maintaining lifelong friendships with fellow graduates and clergy. The Boz family mortuary was founded in 1927 by Philip's grandfather, Felipe Boz Sr. Philip's father later was served as funeral director for the family business, but passed away at the young age of 25 after a motorcycle accident. His son Philip would soon follow in his father and grandfather's footsteps, and in doing so, he continued a proud tradition of providing a critical service to countless community members at the hour of their greatest need. Philip kept that tradition going by remembering that his primary role as a funeral director was to help the community, including many who didn't have the financial means to bury their loved ones. Philip loved his community and was a proud resident of Bull Heights, who served that community and the surrounding communities well. He was a first president of the Bull Heights Chamber of Commerce, he also served on the Lincoln Heights Chamber of Commerce. He was appointed by Mayor Tom Bradley to serve as a CRA Commissioner, and he was part of the first, City First Committee to travel abroad for the subway and transit system consensus. Philip was known for his generosity, his love of family, community, and friends, he was a caring father, husband, and grandfather. The Boz family mortuary business will continue on for a fourth generation operated by Philip's children from an earlier marriage, Philip IV and Jennifer, as well as his wife of 27 years, Teresa. And finally, this year, the Boz mortuary will celebrate 90 years in the funeral industry, they are the longest Latino family-owned and operated mortuary in the East Los Angeles area, something Philip was extremely proud of, and we are all comforted by the fact that his family legacy will live on. Our deepest condolences to all who loved him, he will be greatly missed, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, yes. Looking for any other adjourning motions on my right, seeing none, seeing none on my left, that concludes the council meeting, we are officially adjourned, have a nice council recess, and be safe, thank you.